Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 22, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department. The Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel six and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the bottom of the screen. It's on the screen, anyway. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have road call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kusakian. Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. What's next, Mr. Jimmy?
Flag salute, Mayor.
Okay. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city and give thanks for our blessing. As we continue to social distance ourselves from one another, let us not remain distant from each other's thoughts. Let us pray that we work together to keep our community safe and give thanks to our healthcare workers who continue to serve our city and all persons involved in the care of those affected by this virus. Lastly, we ask that you bless this Glendale City Council and staff for their loyal efforts in making this city the jewel that it is. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jimmy. Next item, please.
The agenda for the September 22, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, September 15, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Divine, we had housing meeting a little bit earlier, few hours earlier. Ms. Divine?
Yes, thank you. As Chair of the Housing Authority, I would entertain a motion for adjournment of today's meeting. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn the Housing Authority meeting.
Second.
Second, thank you. And we are adjourned at 6:16. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. What's next, please?
Next would be three presentation appointments, three agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, September 29, 2020.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Golanyan.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council for September 29, 2020. There are no business agenda items for the Housing Authority. We will, however, have a special meeting of the City Council in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM with one item from community development, regarding economic development update on business recovery strategy grant programs. That evening for the regular City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items, starting with Glendale Water and Power regarding Shoal Substation Transformer Number Four Low-Tap Changer Repair, sorry, followed by Community Service and Parks regarding amendment to the elderly nutrition program and accepting additional CARES Act funding allocation for senior meals, followed by Community Service and Parks regarding a third amendment to Phase Two of the MOU between the Verdugo Workforce Development Board and required local workforce partners. Under action items, City Attorney regarding the emergency orders, followed by City Manager regarding consideration of support for California Prop 15, tax on commercial industrial properties for education and local government funding initiative. And finally, from finance regarding departmental overview that contain library and city treasurer departments. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan. What's next, please?
Three would be presentation, American Society of Civil Engineers Metropolitan Los Angeles Branch, 2020 Award, One Outstanding Bike Ways and Trails Project Bicycle Plan Implementation Project Phase Three, Two Outstanding Construction Project Kenneth Road Rehabilitation Project.
Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council will go directly to Public Works Director Yazdan Emir to provide you with information related to these two awards.
Ms. Marani?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Just as a quick background, American Society of Civil Engineers, or ASCE, was established in 1852 and is the oldest engineering organization in the United States. It has over 150,000 members, including 18,000 members in California, of which 10,000 members are located right here in Southern California. One of ASC's platform has always been advocating for infrastructure renewal through continued investment. Every family and business needs infrastructure to thrive, from the road you travel to work, to the pipes that deliver clean drinking water, to the inland waterways and rail that move goods from coast to coast. ASC's national and local infrastructure report cards are considered the de facto documents on the condition of our infrastructure and are regularly cited by the news media, infrastructure advocates, and elected officials. Every year, ASC's local chapters review hundreds of submissions from public agencies to identify the best-in-class and honor them with an award for their particular category of infrastructure. Public Works Department submitted two projects for this year's awards, and to our delight, both projects were selected as the best projects in their respective category by ASC's Los Angeles Metropolitan Branch. These are the implementation of the Bicycle Transportation Plan Project Phase Three, which was selected as the 2020 Outstanding Bike Ways and Trails Project, and the Kenneth Road Rehabilitation Project, which has been selected as the 2020 Outstanding Construction Project. I would like to acknowledge all the team members for these projects by reading their names. We have some of them in the audience, and I would ask them to come up to receive their award from you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So, for the first project, implementation of the Bicycle Transportation Plan Project Phase Three, we have Mark David, who is the project manager and designer, Van Lam, Construction Inspector for Traffic, Ara Rostam, Construction Inspector for Civil, Gary Etzel, Construction Manager, Tom Kazaris, Construction Supervisor, Ivan Guera, Labor Compliance Officer, George Gonzalez, Survey Party Chief, David Robles, Senior Survey Technician, and Sarkis Organisyan, overall project oversight. And for the second project, which is the Kenneth Road Rehabilitation Project, we have Arthur Osaturian, Project Manager, Mark David, Designer, Traffic, Rostam Tavitian, Designer for Civil Works, Van Lam, Construction Inspector for Traffic, Gary Etzel, Construction Manager, Tom Kazaris, Construction Supervisor, Ivan Guera, Labor Compliance Officer, George Gonzalez, Survey Party Chief, David Robles, Senior Survey Technician, and Sarkis Organisyan, overall project oversight.
And now, I have two flags. I have both of them in here. Have to be careful because these are too big. So, ASCE Metropolitan Los Angeles Branch, a better word by design, Outstanding Bike Ways and Trail Project, 2020 Implementation of the Bicycle Transportation Plan Project Phase Three, City of Glendale All-American Asphalt. This is presented by American Society of Civil Engineers, established 1852. This is one of them. And the second one, which I have to present again, it says ASCE Metropolitan Los Angeles Branch, a better word by design, Outstanding Construction Project 2020, Kenneth Road Rehabilitation, City of Glendale Excel Paving Company, American Society of Civil Engineers are presenting, which established 1852. And now, I guess I have to come closer to present. I don't know whom I have to present, but however, maybe all of you, maybe we take picture with masks? First group, Bicycle. This is the new during this COVID-19 is the first. Are you part of this? Why you not come? I did the Kenneth Road. Okay, the next group. Oh, what is? I was thinking.
Okay.
Okay, now, we have, let me take this off now. All right. As the public are aware of, and my colleagues, they know, Ms. Yasmin Beers is leaving us. Aren't you feel bad that you are leaving us here alone?
Sometimes.
Yasmin, we truly appreciate and recognize the significant contribution you have made during your service to Glendale, which I think extends to 30 years. You have dedicated your professional career to the betterment of the City of Glendale organization and community. You are a consummate professional with integrity and high morale and ethical values. The city is grateful for your commitment and contributions to our community, and we wish you and your family the very best. And you and husband and two kids, those lovely kids. Thank you for your decades of public service. You have no doubt played a crucial role in the great quality of life in Glendale. Thank you very much. And with that, to appreciate Yasmin, we have, okay, we have here, first I want to show it, that we have here the City of Glendale, California Certificate of Retirement, presented to, she's much younger than me, but she's retiring. That's, how come I don't retire? Presented to Yasmin Beers in recognition and appreciation for 27 years of service to the citizens of Glendale. May 1, 1993, October 17, 2020. It's signed by me, Mayor Agajanian. And we have something here also for Yasmin. Okay. This is what I have to present to her in few seconds. Underneath, it says Yasmin K. Beers, in sincere appreciation and gratitude for 27 years of dedicated service to the City of Glendale, May 1, 1993, October 17, 2020. Thank you. So, I present this to you, and maybe we take a picture. I wish everybody would be here. We would take together, but however, I will do it on behalf of my colleagues. Okay. Well, this I have to bring. Okay, where's my mask? Oh. I just have to. Let me take this off. Yasmin Beers.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of the City Council. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the sitting City Council, for giving me the opportunity to say thank you this evening and for allowing me the high honor of serving this wonderful city as a city manager for almost three years. I'd like to thank the council who appointed me. I'd like to thank the council who appointed me city manager in February of 2018, and that was Arna Jarian, Vartan Garpetian, Zare Sinanyan, and Paula Devine. During that council meeting, I mentioned that it doesn't happen by chance. It doesn't happen by chance that I stood before you because of the support of a strong family, starting with my mom and dad, who immigrated to the United States for a better life for their daughters. And to have a supporting sister, who was also here that evening, she has always lent an ear, a shoulder, and many a nights taking care of our kids, when I've been at work or my husband has been at work. To my husband, Dan, who has stood by me and has at times given up his time and his interests to support me and our children. It doesn't happen by chance to have an unbelievable executive team who are dedicated to their craft and the City of Glendale. I had the, very much the pleasure of appointing seven of them to the position of executive in the last three years. These individuals who came to be part of the city organization, some were from the outside of the organization, some from within, but making sure that they were part of the larger team was something that was important to them. I thank the entire team for their dedication and their service to this organization and to the community. A special thanks to my partner in crime, the city attorney, Mike Garcia, I'm not even going to look at him because I will choke up. We've had a lot of fun. You've heard me say this before? God, I thought I could do this. The tone that is set at the top of the organization is key to the success of the city. We have an organization of dedicated staff, providing services to 200,000-plus people who live here, who play here, who work here, who visit us, providing service above self with heart and soul. If there was ever a question about the dedication of this organization and its members, I think COVID-19 proved that this organization, our ability for innovation, our ability for creativity, our ability to provide services in the hardest of times with something that none of us, none of us, thought would ever happen, this organization came together and provided those services, and they were in the forefront, and I thank them for that. It doesn't happen by chance to have a community that is always in the ready and involved, and that makes a great city and a great community. Much has been accomplished during my time as city manager, with the drive, the grit, and the pull from the entire executive team, as well as the city staff. As you can imagine, this has not been an easy decision for me, Mr. Mayor, after 33 years of service, but one that I'm very comfortable with, as well as my family. Public service is a sacred calling. Being a public servant is service before self-interest. I hope I made a small impact during my time here. Having had the opportunity to be a little part of the city organization and a community that I so very much love is a high honor. One I will always cherish, the quality of life equates to quality services, and that doesn't happen by chance. As your outgoing city manager and longtime resident of Glendale, and I will continue to reside here in Glendale, I wish you the best in everything that you do, and the courage to always endeavor to do the right thing. Thank you for a wonderful 33 years and for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasmin. See, that's why I was asking, where do you want to go?
It's time.
Anyways, the city is grateful for your commitment and contributions to our community, and we, on behalf of my colleagues and myself, we wish you and your family the very best.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anybody else wants to say words or anything?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Divine.
Thank you, thank you. This is Yasmin, this is a bittersweet moment. You know, I'm happy for you, I want you to enjoy these upcoming years of your retirement with your family. I know Dan and Bijan and Sophia must be elated, elated, but I'm also unhappy because you're leaving us so soon as city manager. I had hoped that you would stay on for a little while longer, but I guess it was just not meant to be. I've enjoyed working with you all these years, you've done a great job, and I'm so proud of you being a woman and achieving that position, that's very, very important these days. I wish you the best, and just be happy and enjoy. Thank you, thanks Yasmin, love you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh Yasmin, it wasn't supposed to end this way. We were, we on the council and you, we're gonna work hard to make Glendale an even better place to live, at least in the next few years going forward. But I'm very saddened that you have left us, but I'm happy for you that you are gonna be able to spend some time with your family. You've spent many decades with the city, so even though you're very young now, let's all remember you started when you were probably a teenager or not much older than that. So, your commitment to the city is beyond question. Your contributions will ring on for decades to come, and I just hate to see you go, but I know you'll be rooting for us Tuesdays, watching us on GTV6.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ara.
Is there any other comments, or I go to the next?
No, certainly, of course, we can't let the moment go by.
Mr. Kasakian.
You know, this, I know this was a very difficult decision, Yasmin, for you to make, but, you know, as a parent, I understand that when thinking about your wonderful, amazing children, the decision is not so hard, and I wish you well. I am envious of the amount of time that they're going to spend with you and that you'll get to spend with them, and you truly have left your mark on this city. It wouldn't be what it is today without your hard work and contributions from almost in every department, and as a council member, Najarian noted, from having started at a very young and early age and dedicated, your prime years to the city and service to the public. I want to wish you well, I want to wish your family well. We hope to see you, perhaps you don't want to see us as often, and hopefully you are going to take that time away and spend it away from city affairs, but when you are ready, we hope to see you soon again, and why not even come into these chambers and stand at that podium and, like any citizen, tell us what we're doing well, what we're doing wrong. So, we're gonna miss you, be well, and we'll talk soon.
Thank you, Artie.
Thank you. Okay, now, is there any other comment? Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I was waiting my turn. So, yeah, I want to congratulate you, Yasmin, and first of all, tell you that retirement is awesome, if it lasts. My, I retired about the same age as you are now, and it didn't last very long, but it was, it was good. But whatever happens, the world is big and there are endless opportunities, so take your time, explore before you settle on what your next challenge is going to be, because there are twists and turns in life and you don't know where you might possibly end up. I certainly didn't think I would end up here. I've learned a lot from you over just a short period of time, just under six months, and I really appreciate you helping me get up to speed in this, in this new position. And as Councilmember Kasakian said, now you get to write scathing emails telling us everything we're getting wrong, and I look forward to getting those from you. Take care.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the chamber wants to say a few words? Do we have anybody wishes to say a few words about Yasmin? Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, well, first, let me just start off by saying for people who are watching that statement, partner in crime, is just euphemism, we're not actually partners in crime. But as, as Yasmin, I'll just say, no, we've, we've had the discussion, you will be missed, you have left your mark, and I, you know, we're gonna miss you in the city attorney's office, your approach to handling issues, and as, on a personal level, obviously, as the only other employee of the city council, we, you know, there are certain things that only you and I would understand, and I had to go through, and I appreciate your partnership in that regard, and congratulations, and I'm jealous, just like everyone else is.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's the last.
I would like to say a few words, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Rafi Manuchian, yes. City treasure.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I want to, I want to actually join all of you in thanking Yasmin Beers for her long service, long and unblemished service to the City of Glendale. I would also like to say that I was there when you were the first appointed to the city manager's office from the Lightwoods, just a few years ago, I think, wasn't it? And I did not expect to see today, this was unexpected, but I am very happy and joyful for your family. I think they are getting the best deal out of this whole thing. I want to thank you for your, for your leadership over the many, many 20-some years that I've known you, been friends with you. I want to especially thank you for your friendship, which will continue, and I want to wish you the best for your future endeavors, and I want to wish you and your family the best for the coming years, and we will continue to be together as time goes on, and thank you again for all your time for the City of Glendale.
Rafi, thank you for your continued support of me always, and for your friendship, I really appreciate your words.
Thank you. Okay, now, Assistant City Manager, Golanian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't gonna say anything lest I get emotional, but I think I have to, on behalf of every single man and woman of this organization, who have come to know and appreciate and respect Yasmin over the 33 years of dedicated and selfless, like she mentioned, service to the community. She is well-respected amongst the community members, she's well-respected amongst the members of our organization. I wish her well in her next chapter of life. On a personal level, of all the people, I think, I, I take the brunt of the highest impact on my personal and professional lives and career. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your advice, thank you for your love and care, not just for me and for the city manager's office, but as well as every single person. If they had an opportunity to come and speak, I'm sure they would have liked, they have sent you emails, they've called you, they have come in person, and we're all very happy for you, not happy for us, and hope the best, and best wishes for you and for your family in the future. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. So Yasmin, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
You see that everybody's upset that you are leaving, so if you change your mind, let me know, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What's next, Mr. Najarian?
Next is appointment of board and commission members by Councilmember Devine. One, Anita Quinones Gabrielian, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee.
Ms. Yasmin, I'm sorry, Ms. Paula Devine.
Thank you, thank you. I've been through retirement already. Watch out, Yasmin. I'm proud to, to appoint Anita Quinones Gabrielian to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. She's very well-known in this community, she's very active in many organizations and boards. She is a graduate of Cal Poly Pomona, and she was, has also gotten her degree from USC Marshall School of Business. We all know her as being a retired executive from AT&amp;T, where she was the regional VP for External Affairs in greater Los Angeles area. We also know that she was elected and served 15 years on the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees, and during that time, she served as president of that board. She understands the needs for funding, and I think she will be a stellar member of this committee. In her application, she wrote, "I fully understand the critical role of responsibly and objectively allocating federal funding to support the most needed community programs that target the right people and places and are run by efficient organizations." So I am proud to present her as my nominee for the CDVG Committee, and I would ask for concurrence from my colleagues.
Thank you. Do we have to second it? Doesn't need second, yeah, doesn't need second. Okay, thank you.
I need a vote.
We do need a vote, though.
Do we have to vote, honey?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Arjaniyan?
Yes. I forgot that you already introduced her the week before, I guess, is it? Yeah, that's why we are voting. Okay, what's next, please?
Four would be consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Arjaniyan?
Yes, thank you. What's next, Mr. Najarian?
City council and staff comments?
Any comments, Ms. Divine?
Yes, thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to take a couple of minutes to recognize the passing of Chief Justice Ruth Vader Ginsburg, the notorious RBG. She was a pioneer of women's rights and gender equality. She made an indelible mark on our courts, an icon of our generations. She graduated at the top of her class, her law class, yet she could not get a job in New York City. She said she had three strikes against her. One, she was a Jew, two, she was a woman, and three, she was a mother. And for those reasons, she set out to change that thinking and the laws that permitted it. So I just want to acknowledge that Chief Justice Ruth Vader Ginsburg, you were honored, we were honored for your presence, and you will not be forgotten. Second, I'd like to, thank you, I'd like to, I'd like staff to present, if they would, an update on the electric bus that was to be donated to the city for a pilot program. I don't know what happened to that. Is it in service, or have we received it? If I, if anyone can answer that question tonight, fine, and if not, maybe I get a second. Mr. Golanian, I see you're moving towards the mic. You know where that bus is.
Okay, before Mr. Golanian took, since you brought Justice Ruth Ginsburg, you spoke about her, I just wanted to mention something that she said a long time ago, and she was saying that at night, when she was getting married, her mother-in-law came to her and said, "Until today, doesn't matter what you did, but after today, you have to be deaf." It means that everything you hear, everything which happens, you have to be, you don't have to jump and react in, when you get married. That was her, what she mentioned about a long time ago, of course.
Something special, she was special.
Yes, Mr. Golanian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Devine, as a way of background, for those of you who may or may not know, Councilman Najarian introduced us to BYD Corporation that have, had agreed to Councilman Najarian introduced us to BYD Corporation that have, had agreed to loan us a fully electric bus for one year on a pilot program to try out. We proceeded with installing a transformer outside the new Beeline Maintenance Facility, which was ready to, to go to work and energize the bus. We started the negotiations of the terms of the contract with BYD for that one year. Unfortunately, though, we were not able to come to a final agreement on the terms of the, as far as the liability was concerned. So our attorneys have commented on, on the agreement and sent it back to BYD attorneys. And essentially, the ball is in their court. And we're waiting perhaps some kind of compromise on, on their behalf. And I've been in contact with their public outreach consultant, and he is pushing from his end to see if we can get the contract in place, the agreement, before they can deliver the bus to us.
Okay, so it's ongoing. Yeah, that's a, that's great news, because, you know, it's a key component to our future renewables and transportation. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Golanian. My next item is, with more than 100 deaths related to COVID-19 in Glendale, one of our residents, Stephen Meek, reached out to me and possibly to others, to propose some sort of memorial for those lives that have been lost. You know, it's, it's sad, because many had no way to honor their family members. And so I'd like to propose to staff and maybe get a second from my colleague, we come up with suggestions to honor those that, that have passed. I've been seeing on, on the news that some cities are donating a plant for each person that has passed, or have some sort of a memorial where their names are read. Perhaps we could do something at the Adams Square Gas Station with names suspended. I mean, there must be a plethora of ideas. So if I can get a, maybe a second.
I would second it, I would second.
Thank you, thank you. And finally, finally, I would also request staff report, and I, I think I got a second on this one, regarding a proposed tram in Griffith Park, and which could negatively impact on our Rancho area, especially those that are, own horses and ride in that area. I understand that LA is against the tram. It would cut through, it's in Griffith Park, of course, and it would, it would have a lot of negative impacts. And of course, I feel that we wanna save the Rancho. So if we can get somehow involved in, in this proposal, I understand that we have not even been asked about that. I don't know if there's a comment to be made, but perhaps staff can come back with a report for council.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you. I'll look forward to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kusakian.
I'll defer Councilmember Najarian, also he raised his hand at the same.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Kusakian. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I echo all of the words that Councilmember Divine mentioned about the late and great Ruth Vader Ginsburg. He certainly was a judicial giant, whose presence on that body will be missed, whose congeniality with her colleagues was an example for all. And her loss will weigh heavy on us, especially in the coming months. So first of all, to everyone of the Jewish faith who celebrated the New Year a few days ago, I want to say Shana Tova and wish everyone well. I'm not too familiar with the Jewish calendar, but hopefully, the Jewish New Year can turn a new leaf for all of us, because 2020 hasn't been everything we were hoping for. So to everyone who celebrated Rosh Hashanah, I wanna wish them well. I also was very proud of our city and my colleagues last week when we took some historic steps to acknowledge our city's past interactions. Really hit home, especially as I continue to read about attacks on different people of color and minority groups. An Armenian private school, I believe a K-8 school up in San Francisco, I believe it was, it's K-8, but an Armenian private school for children in San Francisco was vandalized with graffiti and slurs a month ago. And then just a few days ago, someone shot at the school with a gun. And there's also talk of an act of arson at that community center up in the Bay Area for the Armenian community and the church there. So I just wanna say that although we're here and away from what's happening there, my thoughts and prayers are with the Armenian community in the Bay Area, and I hope those are parizing that community, and that people will be caught and brought to justice. There was some chatter, but also a few weeks ago, I have a few items today, I will try to get through it as quickly as possible. There was some chatter a few weeks ago about a very troubling incident where one of our local businesses, and I wanna thank the owners of Seven Q Spot for their vigilance, they reported someone dumping what appeared to be US Postal Service packages on their property, like it was garbage and taking off. There was camera footage that gained much national media attention. So I inquired about it, I know my colleagues did as well. It was certainly disturbing to see that. So I'd like to ask our police chief to give us some information, so the public knows what we are doing, what our part in this is. And I also want the public to be aware of what's going on. I still have faith in our US Postal Service and want people to know what is happening, especially as an election is around the corner. And every Californian in this election is going to be receiving a vote-by-mail ballot to participate. So I'll take a pause now, if the chief is around, and he can maybe comment on that.
Police chief is here to comment on it. Mr. Povolitis, Chief Povolitis.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, yes, we did have an incident with mail dropped, or I shouldn't say mail, but packages dropped in two separate locations. That is actually, the investigation's under the jurisdiction of the United States Postal Inspection Service, and they are actually handling it. They do touch base with us from time to time, but as I'm sure we're all aware, with federal agencies, the, the communication isn't always direct to, to local law enforcement. They are actively working it. The only preliminary information that I have is it does not appear that the packages that were dropped belonged or were part of the United States Mail Service. It's that they were packages with some other service, but they're not telling us who.
Thank you. Just a few more items really quickly, and some of them will require a second from my colleagues. I've been contacted by residents living in South Glendale, those abutting to car dealerships, and at various times over the last three years, they've complained over, about excessive noises from the dealerships. And this isn't occasional mechanical work coming from the garage, but specifically about the PA systems used on the dealership lots to make announcements and communicate with each other. In addition to the sounds, many of these dealers have apparently encroached upon side streets for their businesses, often blocking critical and scarce parking spaces with large vehicles and loading and unloading of vehicles that results in inconveniencing the residents who have the misfortune of being the neighbors there. I would like staff to study and look into this issue, to see how we can push the activities of the dealers onto Brand Boulevard instead of on the side streets, and how to ensure that the dealerships are doing their part in being good neighbors in regard to the neighborhoods in which they are operating. I'm specifically concerned about the 200 block of West Garfield between Brand and Central. I seem to be getting more communication about that location than others. I'd also like staff to look into a park space lease program that we have, whereas we are renting out space to trainers or gyms to use outdoor amenities we have during COVID. I know this was recently announced. I think it's a great program, but for businesses that can demonstrate that they already have a lease that they are paying, I'd like us to consider giving them a significant discount or providing them the park space for free as part of our relief efforts for those gyms who have been paying rent. Perhaps this is something that can be discussed next week, as we talk about some of the relief efforts during COVID. But if not, I do think it's only just to not make individuals pay twice, even though they are using our park space, but still. If that is something that staff can do, and if one of my colleagues could second that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. And another issue that I would like us to consider, it's a greater issue and will require a bit more discussion on our part, and staff to bring forth some of their ideas, is the issue of code compliance. Our code compliance staff, specifically our inspectors, do a fine job of looking out for our neighborhoods and have done so with diminished resources over the years. Now occasionally, they come across someone who did something inadvertently, without knowledge of our laws and city codes, something as simple as replacing an old fence, windows that were leaking, they may be replaced, perhaps laid down artificial turf, thinking they were doing something to help the environment or saving water. And then the hammer falls. Someone reports the violation, or it comes to the attention of staff, and a spiral of shame begins. Some have the means and can correct their mistakes, but there are occasions when a family put out a large sum or took out a loan for what they deemed was a home improvement and now has to be undone with another larger expense or as large an expense to remedy their initial mistake. So in the past, we have said, your mistake is your mistake, and our staff diligently works with people, I know that. But I want to review how we can come up with ways to gain compliance from residents through other means and giving them additional options, and specifically for people who may not have the funds. I've had some preliminary discussions with staff regarding this, because the issue came up with a resident and a fence. And over the years, I've seen this pattern with other issues as well in the city. So perhaps it's time for us to revisit this. And Mr. Lands of Fame, if one of my colleagues will second my request, would you please work with your staff and bring us back a report, so we can give staff direction as to what are some options that we can give to individuals who fall out of compliance, who want to do the right thing, but maybe do not have the financial means immediately to do so?
I will second it. I will second.
Thank you. That is all, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brotman?
Well, I think Councilwoman Najarian was next.
I mean, you go ahead, and then I give the chance to Councilmember Najarian.
Okay. I have two items. The first is about a young woman named Lauren Gagan. Some of you might know Lauren's story. She is, she was born and raised in Glendale and attended Immaculate Heart High School. When she was 28, she and her boyfriend Jay set off on an ambitious bike trip, first across Africa and Europe, and then into Central Asia. And it was a year later, while cycling in Tajikistan, that she and her boyfriend Jay were brutally murdered by a group of ISIS terrorists. I read about this in 2018 when it happened, but I never knew that Lauren was from Glendale. I even actually met her parents during the campaign, but they never mentioned it, so I didn't know the connection until very recently, her mom reached out to me to ask whether we could do something to remember Lauren's remarkable life. The family's hoping to have a tree planted in Brand Park, which is a place where Lauren loved to play as a child, and that they're happy to pay for, along with a bench and a plaque. It's, I, I read up about, about that story, there's a video too, which is worth watching. And it's, it's a, it's a very tragic story. I spoke to Lauren's mom for quite a long time the other day. It's, you know, it's, at one level, it's about a Glendale family who wants to commemorate the tragic loss of their child. But it, it's more than that. It's also about a young couple who are searching for meaning, you know, beyond their safe American lives, and both of whom gave up good-paying jobs to search the world and find commonalities with people and places completely different from those they grew up with, and who believed deeply in the kindness of strangers, and about their encounter with a dark ideology that's all about fear of the outside world and hatred of people with different beliefs and backgrounds. So I hope we can support the family's request. And I, I believe I do need a second from one of my colleagues for staff to go ahead and work with the family to identify a good spot and make this happen.
I believe Councilmember Divine, your microphone is enough.
Second that, but I think that I brought this before council about two years, two years ago. And I thought that we had arranged with Glendale Beautiful that they would plant a tree with the mother, and, and, I don't know, but I will definitely second this.
Okay.
Let's get it.
Thank you, thank you. The, the other item I have is about a problem we're all probably noticing, which is the, the mosquitoes. It's gotten so bad, and, you know, it's, it's another one of the many consequences of climate change that we're suffering here. But, I mean, at least where I live, it's gotten so bad, I really can't spend time outside. And then we've recently had reports of a case of West Nile virus in Glendale. So I wanted to understand what, what residents can do to address either local instances of, of a problem with the mosquitoes, or whether there's anything the city can do, city-wide to address the problem. So I asked Oneg if he could, Oneg Bolanikian, if he could reach out to the, what is it, Greater LA Vector Control District, see if there's someone who could come in and, and talk to us about what's going on and what options we have. And I think, hopefully, Oneg can give us some information on that.
Mr. Rep?
Mr. Bolanikian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Abijanian, members of the council. Residents can call the LA County Vector Control District and fill out a request form to get their property inspected. A technician will come out, inspect the property, and give the resident advice on how to treat the infected areas. Next week, we will be having the Director of Community Affairs giving a presentation to council and the public on the services that they provide.
Thank you.
So we'll meet with them next week.
Okay, Mr. Brotman, any more comments?
No, I'm, I'm finished, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think you're the representative, aren't you, on the vector control board? So maybe you can have them give us a?
Yes, I will call them.
Information session.
Yes, I am a member of the board, and I will call them to see if they can come up with more information.
Good. With regard to Ms. Divine's discussion on the aerial tramway, the, I'm not sure what phase that is in, but at Metro, we received a report about a tramway proposal from LA Union Station to Dodger Stadium. I believe that the Griffith Park spur, if you will, is somehow connected to that process. That is being fully funded by Frank McCourt, the former owner of the Dodgers. And they are trying to fast-track the first step of the Union Station to a Dodger Stadium leg, if you will. And of course, the idea is to get people out of their cars to prevent more greenhouse gases. Of course, the number-one contributor to greenhouse gases, if I'm not mistaken, are the mobile sources that we all create when we drive our non-electric vehicles. I'm also gonna be voting on a sustainability plan at Metro for the entire LA County Transportation System. And it really is quite an incredible report and document, and I'd like to bring that to City Council next Tuesday, or perhaps the week after, the agenda space permitting, so we can go over it. I think it'd be a great framework for our new Sustainability Officer and for council to see how Metro has organized it. We've been working on sustainability for 10 years now. I think it was when I was Metro Chair that we voted that Sustainability Officer and Sustainability Efforts. So Metro has made a lot of great progress, and I'd like to bring that to Glendale, and hopefully, we can learn from some of the steps that Metro has taken. So either next week or the week after, hopefully, I can get a little time to give you a presentation on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, I would like to ask to invite staff to share any comments that they have. No? No comment? Okay. All right, what's next, Mr. Ajami?
Next would be community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to our caller.
Tony Passerillo, you're live, Tony?
Hi, Arm.
Go ahead, you're live. Yes.
Councilmember staff, congratulations, City Manager Beers, enjoy your retirement. Arm, could you put those photos up?
They're up.
We're gonna talk about perspective tonight, folks. It's a cruel, it's a cruel world sometimes, and I know you'd all agree with that. This is, this is Fremont Park. Slow, slow it down a little bit. Can you go back, Arm? Please go back. Okay, this is Fremont Park. You can go by there in the afternoon. Well, could you go back, please? We're wasting a lot of my time here. We're wasting a lot of my time here. No, 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 no. I don't want that picture.
This one?
No, 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 take that away. That's not what, okay, that's, that's Nibley.
Is this the one you want, Tony?
No, 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 please scratch that. That's Maple. So that one's closed, Maple's closed. That one's open, that's Fremont, as well as the tennis lesson. They're playing dead volleyball over there today. The seniors are still over there with no masks on. So apparently the virus, it's, it's called the unique or what's it called? Novel, novel coronavirus? Well, I guess it is. It's got an intelligence, an intelligence about it. It's a geographical virus. I know that's absurd, but, but apparently it doesn't, it doesn't strike people at Fremont Park. Because Fremont Park's completely open. And the other parks are closed, especially the children's areas. I'm talking about Maple. I'm just wondering why that is. And I think we should open all the parks. If one is open, they all should be open. That, that's Milford Mini Park. Anyway, let's talk about perspective enough for the pictures. H1N1 outbreak, ages zero to 17, 1,090 deaths. In 2019, 2020, the seasonal flu, 188 deaths in children. A drowning account on average every year, 800 deaths. Bicycle accident on average account for 100 deaths in children. 1,700 children die from child abuse or neglect on average every year. Age zero to 19 deaths due to unintentional injury. 460,000 children go missing every year. Runaways used for child trafficking, 460,000. 3,500 babies die each year, sleep-related issues. And the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, has killed 64 children under the age of 14. I, I, I know, you know, death is always unfortunate, but, you know, things happen. There's earthquakes, there's fires, there's car accidents, there's train wrecks. I mean, people die all the time. But let, let's use the perspective here, folks, that, that we're closing all the children's parks. They're, they're more apt to die in their home by these stats. These are all CDC stats, by the way, CDC. 1,700 children abused or neglected in the home, in the home. So let's get them outside, let's get them out playing in the sunshine, which is, which is a good way to combat this novel coronavirus. And the other thing I want to move to really quickly, I know my time is probably just about up.
Your time is up, Mr. Passerella. Your time is up, long time ago, but however, finish the sentence.
Well, we wasted a lot of time with those pictures. So, okay, I won't press the issue. Please, please open up the park. If one is open, they all should be open. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do, do we have any other calls?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be action items. Eight A Finance regarding a monthly financial status report. One motion to note and file the monthly financial status report. Two resolution amending the citywide fee schedule to adjust the public works, engineering, construction, excavation permits, application processing and inspection, inspection fee.
Thank you, Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. The last six months have been some of the most challenging for cities, towns and for us all in the nation. The safer-at-home measures have impacted our ability to understand financially what those impacts would be to the city of Glendale and really our ability to forecast appropriately as it relates to our five-year forecast, where we were within the budget in 1920 and even in, in 2021. If you remember, as we went through the budget process just recently in the months of, of May and June, with the number of study sessions that we had as we talked about the financial impacts and our ability to forecast, the conversation we had was to make sure that we had a measured approach in order and really took the time to allow some of the numbers to come in because it's something that we as a staff and as a community and as a nation had never dealt with before, to understand what the impacts are going to be here locally within the city of Glendale. And during the study sessions, you, Mr. Mayor, asked for a monthly update to be brought to the city council so that you have up-to-the-minute updates as we do in terms of any changes to those numbers. This is the second update that we're bringing you. We brought one last month and this is the second one, sir, that we're bringing to you in the city council to provide you with information. We have better information related to 1920 in terms of closing of the fiscal year. And it is looking rosier than, than we anticipated. It is looking much better. And my hat's off to our team as well as our consultants who really worked hard to have the appropriate assumptions, thankfully. We, you know, again, we didn't know how this was going to turn out, having the appropriate assumptions in place. And Ms. Flynn, Director of Finance, will take you through a number of slides to provide you with that information and answer any questions that you may have. With that, Ms. Flynn.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Our agenda this evening, we will look at the fiscal year 1920. We're still calling it preliminary actuels at this point only because we are still in the process of closing the books for the year. Our annual audit is still underway and we do not have final, final numbers yet. But these are as close to final as we could get at this point. We'll also give you a quick update on Measure S as well as fiscal year 2021 and the one change that we are asking for on the citywide fee schedule. So looking at slide four, this will provide to you revenues that we typically report in the major revenue categories to city council. The three columns are there. The adopted budget is what city council adopted during the June 19, 2019 budget process. The revised budget column represents what city council saw during the May budget study sessions when we reported on the general fund. And our preliminary actuels are everything that we have in, on the books to date that we can provide to you. We do not anticipate major changes to these numbers at this point, perhaps some minor fluctuations, but the, the major numbers are represented in this chart. So in May, when we brought to you the revised budget due to COVID, we had anticipated our adopted budget reducing by about $10.5 million. That's represented between the $233 million in the adopted budget column and the $225.5 million in the revised budget column. We were looking at reductions in various categories, including sales tax, utility users tax, transient occupancy tax, licenses and permits, charges for services and in the electric transfer, all mainly due to the COVID situation. As Ms. Beers stated, the estimates that we were receiving from our consultants were vetted out by staff. We had many dialogues with them, looking at different resources as much as we can to figure out what we were going to do since it was a situation that we had not yet ever encountered. We're happy to tell you this evening that our preliminary actuels are actually better than what we thought back in May, to the tune of about $3.4 million. And those are represented in the categories that you can see. Our, our sales tax numbers did a lot better than we anticipated once we did that revision last May. A lot of that is due to online sales. The sales tax that we receive through the online sales that are happening by consumers is making up for some of the losses that we're experiencing in the retail and the restaurant sectors. This does include sales like on Amazon, Etsy and other online options. There's also increases in food and drug categories where people are shopping at markets more than they are going out to restaurants. And fast food and casual restaurants did a lot better than sit-down restaurants. Still down from previous, but much better than we had anticipated. So when we're looking at our results for sales tax overall compared to LA County and Glendale, we're pretty much in line with what all those sectors are, are performing at, which is, which is really good news. Another area that we were very pleased about was in our charges for services. You can see there that we, and we received a little over 17 million, which is up from the 15 million that we had projected in May. A lot of this is due to the increase in the Shoal Canyon tipping fees that came in as well as the emergency medical response payments that came in. And those are primarily due to additional or increases in how those payments are coming in from primarily Medi-Cal. So overall, very good picture for our revenues. And I'll look at the other side of the house now on slide five. This is the expenditure side, again, by major categories.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do we check that the sales, which is happening online, the companies are collecting taxes, sales taxes? Because I know there are companies that you can buy and they don't ask for sales tax. They say, go and pay yourself. Are we following? Do we, do we have any system to see that companies are collecting the taxes?
Mr. Mayor, the city does not do any of that follow-up. We have our consultant that does all the sales tax audits for us and they work with the State Board of Equalization.
State Board of Equalization. But State Board of Equalization, they don't go after those who are selling things and whether they collect taxes or not?
Well, as far as I know, Mr. Mayor, the, our, our sales tax consultant, they do look at the trends, they look at the various providers. And if we, if they see something, they do definitely have the right to do the audits.
Because I don't want to mention the name of the company in New York, that it's such a big company, it's unbelievable. And they sell equipment. And until a year ago, I didn't try this past year, they were not asking for any taxes or sales tax on any equipment which they were selling.
There was a change in the law on online sales that occurred about a year and a half ago. Perhaps it's changed, I'm not sure, but maybe we can talk and you can let me know and I'll let our consultant know.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'm looking at slide five, our major categories of expenditures, salaries and benefits, maintenance and operations, and then under capital and transfers. So overall, we are 5% lower than what our revised budget was for our expenditures in all the various areas, even though we, we anticipated some increases like in supplies, et cetera, as a result of purchasing additional PPEs for the city. The hiring freeze that we implemented due to COVID, you can see that site, that savings come through in our salaries number. Closures of our facilities, we have, is a direct result of the hourly wages looking lower as well as our utilities being a little bit lower than projected. And overtime is trending about what it typically is every year. Usually we are right around the $16 million mark in actuels for overtime. So that is really trending right in that, right in line. And all of our departments have come in under budget. So they have done a fantastic job managing their expenditures through the year and holding to the hiring freeze that was implemented and dealing with that vacancy, those vacancies, which is not always easy.
I'm sorry, the overtime?
Yes.
The overtime adopted budget is 10 million, 181, right?
Correct.
And then revised is 10 million, 181, and now it's 16 million, 240.
Correct.
It's 60% more.
Yes, sir. And that is primarily due to the police and fire and our safety operations with their staffing in having to fill positions that are vacant or people out on vacation. They need to have their staff come in working overtime to fill those vacancies and those people, other people being out. And like I mentioned, that is not uncommon in our previous year. Last year, our overtime number was right under $16 million for the year. So we're pretty much in line as we were in the past. So moving along, slide six. This will give you a picture of what our total results look like when we add up all our, our revenues and appropriations and we take out our projected savings. And what we're, what we're trying to provide you here is what we initially projected back in May. And if you go down towards the bottom of the slide, you'll see the projected net loss of the $5.8 million. That's what we were projecting to end the year with back in May. And then the next column represents what we reported to council last month in August. We adjusted that slightly to a loss of 5.7 million. And now we're happy to say that we are right under $1 million at about $915,000. So you can see where that, those changes happen. We had more revenue come in to the tune of a little over 3 million and we had increased savings in, on the expenditure side. We're still anticipating a low amount of carryovers this year. So we're going to try to keep at that 800,000 and see where we go. But the departments are all committed to keeping those numbers low to help ease the budget pressures that we have for the year. Fiscal year 2021 budget is remaining as adopted by council in June with a projected loss of just under $4.8 million. Slide seven gives you an update on where we're looking at for our fund balance. And if you recall, what we reported back in August as well as in May was that fiscal year, June 30th, 2020, we would end the year at about 32.5%. And because of the better performance on the revenues as well as the expenditures for the year, we've earned, we've gained a couple of percentage points. We're now looking at 34.6%. And if everything holds for this current fiscal year, as we're projecting, we will end this year at 32% instead of the 30 that we had originally anticipated. Okay, moving along on slide nine is a quick update on Measure S. And you can see our revenues in that last column are slightly higher than what our revisions were in May by about $600,000. So that's all good news that we've increased there. And the expenditures are dedicated to the programs for Measure S under housing, infrastructure, recreation and the Holiday Ice Rink, as well as the economic recovery that we started in fiscal year 20, 1920. And then a quick update on fiscal year 2021. As I mentioned, we are not changing any of the projections at this point. We don't have enough data to do anything that we would recommend at this point. What departments have all done is they've looked at their budgets and there are some potential savings in a few categories. Salaries and benefits, about $616,000. Contractual services, about $879,000. And travel and training, about $188,000. So this totals about $1.7 million in the general fund that departments have come up with to, to basically not spend and aren't able to spend. And I should say the salaries and benefit number is on top of the projected $5 million in vacancy savings that we have for the year. So this anticipated savings can remain in the departmental budgets. If they're, if it's unspent, it just basically gets realized at the end of the year. And then we, it rolls back into fund balance or we could designate it in an economic recovery fund of some sort. And what I would add to this slide, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, is that this is the initial blush at reductions for 2021 in terms of what departments have been able to look at early on in terms of possibilities of, of reductions within their budgets. In the upcoming monthly updates brought to you by the Finance Department and the staff, there may be other reductions that are possible in terms of the departments not being able to get to certain projects, et cetera, that can be brought forward to the city council and a determination and recommendation be made at that time. I would suggest that the anticipated savings not stay in the departmental budgets. I would suggest that they get released either into fund balance. Your re-
I would suggest that they get released either into fund balance, your reserves, basically, or allocated separately into an economic recovery fund where you can make decisions at a later time in terms of the expenditure of those funds. Those are some options for the City Council to consider.
And lastly, we have one change to our fee schedule, our citywide fee schedule. We need to make one change that was adopted as part of the overall citywide fee schedule back in June. The, in Public Works, it's the engineering, I'm sorry, engineering, construction, excavation permits, inspection fee. We're asking to reduce that hourly rate from $218 per hour to $152 per hour.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Miss Flynn, from Miss Flynn. No questions?
I have a question.
Yes. Ms. Devine?
Thank you. I have, I've asked staff and Michelle at the next report if you will bring us budget projections for the next five years, so we can see what we're looking at and what we can do now to mitigate any of those deficits.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report. It's a bit of good news, I think, a bit of good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, I have a few questions for Michelle. So, I mean, first of all, thanks for this report and doing these monthly updates. I think this is really great. And it's good news. I guess we're looking at an improvement of 4.8 million from what we originally thought our loss would be to what we currently think our loss is going to be, correct?
Yes.
The 4.8 is the number from, from, from the time of the budget study sessions in May, I believe, right? From then till now?
Yes.
A $4.8 million improvement. So can you go back to the chart that shows the revenue side?
Number, which page? Which page?
I think it's Slide 4.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so it looks like on the revenue, so we're, and I'm trying to get to that $4.8 million improvement in our general fund loss. I'm trying to piece together what the components of that $4.8 million is. So it looks like on the revenue side, we're coming in 3.4 million higher than we anticipated in May, right?
Correct.
Right. And, and I think, from what you said now, and we discussed this yesterday, some of the big items, I mean, some of the items look like they're kind of one-offs. Still good news, I'm not complaining. But, but, for instance, I think we've put an unrealized gain of 2.1 million from the portfolio into our, I guess we've accounted for that, so that's flowing into our balance, right?
Yes. That is an interest.
And like unrealized gains in the portfolio are interest income, right, of 2.1? Now, is that, so that, we don't know from year to year what that's going to be, right? That can be up and down?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, that is what is considered GASB 31. It's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Accounting Pronouncement on Recording the Market Value of Your Investments at the End of Your Year. So for us, it's at June 30th. We need to recognize an unrealized gain or an unrealized loss, depending on the market value of the investments on that date. So we do not budget for that number. Some years, it's a negative, some years, it's a positive. This year, it was a positive to the tune of $1.7 million. That's represented in the line for interest slash use of money in property. And then there's the other $430,000, which is additional interest earned on the portfolio. That's actual interest earned. So the GASB 31 entry is more of a paper entry, but it still does recognize that in the revenues.
Okay, so 2.1 million of the 3.4 improvement on our revenue side is coming from this particular set of items, the interest and the unrealized gain that we're taking into the portfolio, or we're taking into the general fund, right?
Correct.
And then on the charge for service, it sounds like the biggest item there is our emergency response. And were we able to get at why we are seeing such an upside? 2.3 million upside on the emergency medical services is pretty substantial. Do we know, you know, was something happening, like our fire department was sending more people out because of COVID? Or do we have any idea whether that's something that's going to be sustained, or that's a one-off?
I can ask the fire chief to explain for you. He's looked at it a little bit more closely.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman. It is a bit of a complicated subject, but to answer the core of your question, we aren't sure if it's going to be a one-off or not. It does appear that there is a shift in healthcare related to Medi-Cal in the system. Just as a comparison, in 2016, fiscal year 2016, 30.8% of our ambulance billing was Medi-Cal. In fiscal year 20, 29.3% of it was Medi-Cal. However, each of those years, the non-managed numbers of Medi-Cal patients has dramatically decreased. So in 2016, only 5.2% were non-managed Medi-Cal patients. In 2020, 3.5 are non-managed. So the non-managed are going drastically down, which allows people to essentially diversify their Medi-Cal. They're going out and getting other medical private insurance on top of their Medi-Cal, which our bill collector sends bill to all of them, and they're collecting more fees. So this year, we collected roughly 1.5 million more in ambulance service from Medi-Cal. What will be interesting is with COVID, the call volume for medical calls for a good chunk of this year was down. There was somewhat of a fear of calling 911 and a fear of going to the hospital. So this year won't probably be a good year to compare to 1920, to see if it truly is going to be a trend that continues, or if it's a one-off.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful, because I'm, really, what I'm trying to do is get at, you know, how much of this we think is, is kind of a, yeah, one-off surprise, and how much of this might be sustained. It sounds like on the sales tax side, we have some good things going on. I know you talked about the county pool and the money we're getting from online sales, which is definitely something that we can assume is going to continue, right?
Correct.
And, and also, you mentioned something to me yesterday, which is that on the auto side, a lot of customers are leasing, and so that stabilizes that revenue stream, because we get paid monthly, right, on those leases, rather than, you know, just one time when they purchase the vehicle, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, yes, that's correct. On leases, we do get that revenue stream monthly with those lease payments, as well as our used car sales actually did pretty well this past quarter. So that was, that was a nice surprise. Still down, as I mentioned, but better than we had initially projected.
Okay.
Our car dealers in general do, I'm sorry to interrupt, our car dealers in general do very well in Glendale.
Right, okay. So, good, I just wanted to walk through that. So, you know, revenue side, 3.4 million higher. Some of that looks like it's, it's something that we can expect to continue. Much of it looks like it's one-off, and I think it's important to recognize that. On the expense side, it looks like, my understanding is that some of savings on the expense side were because of lower utility costs with the closure of some of our buildings, perhaps, and also on contractual services, some delayed projects because of COVID that delayed the billings from, or the work of the contractors. And I guess that we can't really expect to continue, although I know you did say on the contractual services side, there are ways that we can try to avoid just having those costs come back.
Mr. Mayor.
We're going to do something to kind of minimize that, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, on the contractual services side, we typically see about 75% to 80% of the budget utilized in a fiscal year. So that percentage is about where we typically are. So that is not necessarily anything due to COVID one way or the other. With regards to the utilities, yes, that is down maybe about $500,000 or $600,000 different than what, than what we would typically experience, and that is because of buildings being closed and other facilities that we have across the city being closed. The other area due to COVID was in hourly wages. So I would say between hourly wages and utilities, and then our hiring freeze, those are the big areas for COVID, where we, where we definitely saw some savings.
Okay. All right, so, good. So I think, yeah, this is, I think, it doesn't really tell us what this current fiscal year is going to bring, but at least it gives us more maneuverability as we come into it, which is really good news. So thank you for that.
Of course.
Thank you. Is there any other comment questions from?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Najari.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. It's very good news. It's very good news that our budget numbers are as presented, especially in terms of what we as a city and a region have gone through in the past six months. And I believe that this may be perhaps the best going-away gift for Ms. Beers, and that's a vindication of her urging council to stay the course, stay calm, don't panic. Remember, in May, June, we were talking about furloughs and cutting back, and she said, hold the line, let's see how it turns out. We have our hiring freeze, that's going to slowly reduce our revenues, our expenses. And, and this is how it turned out, which is, which is very good. I mean, this is almost just a blip on our budget projection. So, you know, congratulations, Yasmin, and management staff. I'm glad we held the line and just, you know, took a few deep breaths, and I think we're going to see a great recovery. The economist is Chris Thornburg from Beacon Economics, who indicated that there's going to be a very strong recovery in the next six months. And I think we'll be getting the dividends from that recovery as our revenues continue to increase, as our property taxes increase, sales tax increase, and we continue to hold the line on our expenses. So, am I right, Yasmin? Is that a good going-away gift for you?
Thank you, Mr. Najari. And it sure is. I mean, we always like good news when it comes to budget. And again, not knowing where we were headed, and being very cautious throughout the process, and having the best assumptions in place doesn't always get you the numbers, because things can change, as you know. But staying the course and being measured, I think, is always helpful, and time, in this case, has been on our side. And it feels good to leave knowing that we continue to balance our budgets on an annual basis, and we continue to have a very healthy reserve in place, unlike most cities. And this council has always been conservative in their decision-making related to the finances, and I applaud all of you for staying the course and being patient. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Yasmin. It was very scary, and maybe I'm making a little bit light of it, but thinking of the worst-case scenario was very frightening, looking over the abyss, but I'm glad that it turned out the way it did. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kasaki.
I just want to thank staff for the report. It certainly is positive news. We remain cautiously optimistic that this trends will continue. I hope Councilmember Najari is right about an economic recovery. Certainly, although numbers across the nation seem to be holding okay, there is a concern of what may happen with second waves, with another more serious shutdown. So I do like the fact that during some of the more difficult times, our numbers held close to what staff projected they would be. Hopefully, they'll continue that trend. You know, my only concern is, I don't want to say, I think I mentioned this during some of the briefings, that it's not whether that my glass is half-full or half-empty necessarily, it's just when will Sacramento put their straw in our glass and take the remaining water? Because we know how the state's finances suffered very significantly because of this COVID crisis. And I know how in the past, the redevelopment agency was done away with, and all those properties essentially were absorbed into the state and said that you have to pay up for that. So I hope that we don't repeat the past. I hope that we remain on this course. And thank you for your work and staff's work in presenting this, and thank you for bringing this report forward and continuing to bring reports forward. And, you know, I hope that we can, again, do some deep dives into all the departments as we move forward to the next season of budget study sessions. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
The deep dives will commence next week, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, so we will start with those starting next Tuesday. Or they will start with those starting next Tuesday, I should say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flynn and staff. So I guess now I entertain a motion.
Michelle, good job, good job to you two. We were, we were laying it on Yasmin, but I know you're, you're the financial brains behind the city, so thank you, Michelle.
All of it.
Do I have, thank you. Do I have a motion for these two items? I guess one was the tax or fee.
Make the motion to note and file the financial status report.
Second.
There's also, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's also 882, which is the fee resolution, if you can make that part of the same motion.
Can it be taken as part of the same motion?
A1 and 2?
Then I'll move 881 and 882, which is the resolution for the fees.
Second, both.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Mr. Brotman?
Councilmember Brotman?
Go on, mute.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't get my cursor to work. Yes. Devine?
Yes.
Kasaki?
Yes.
Najari?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajian.
Yes, what's next, please?
Next would be the City Treasurer, City Treasurer Annual Review of the City Portfolio. One motion accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Manukin?
Can we do both?
Can we do both at the same time, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
If Mr. Ajajian can read both.
All right. Please read them.
Good evening, council members, can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to present our annual report, the City Treasurer's annual report.
One second, one second, Mr. Ajajian.
Sure, I'll be reading item number C.
Oh, sorry.
City Glendale Investment Policy. One would be resolution adopting the city investment policy for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Manukin?
Yes, I would like to, as I said, I would like to present the annual report, the City Treasurer, as of June 30, 2020. If we can move to the next slide. The City Treasurer's office handles all the banking relationships of the city, including the credit card processing, as well as the security for the credit cards, processing machines, and everything else as it relates to the credit card securities, the investments. And we would act as a and the investments, and we would act as a trustee of various street approval bonds, if there were any, and which there are none. Next slide, key statistics for the City of Glendale. Just to note a few, number five is the number of transactions reconciled annually, which is around fifty-six thousand. Number eight, a few years ago, recommended to implement credit card service fees for the city in nineteen twenty, we blocked it at a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars in fees, to offset the fees that the credit card industry charges the City of Glendale. And items nine and 10, we're always on guard for fraudulent activities as it relates to our banks and our banking, bank accounts. Next slide, please. Our investment objectives, first and most important is the preservation of principal, then ensuring liquidity so we can pay our bills on a daily basis and then yield. Risk is not tolerated, and the rate of return should at least meet the annual total return on the three-month treasury bill. Next slide. Currently, we have three portfolios, the city funds, successor agency funds, and the redevelopment agency bonds. Next slide, the city's investment in cash. Next slide, please. The total city's investment in cash for the year ended June 30, 2020 is eight hundred and ninety million dollars. Of that, seven hundred and seventy-five is invested, and one hundred and fourteen, approximately one hundred and fifteen million is in cash. We increased our liquidity to prepare it for unexpected events due to the pandemic. And if you take into account just our payroll, that would cover approximately six months of payroll. Asset allocation for our portfolio is pretty much the same as it was last year. We can go to the next slide. Asset allocation is pretty much the same thing, except, uh, some securities that have matured. Next slide, please. The overall credit ratings for our investments remain high, and we continue to acquire highly, highly rated investments. Next slide, please. I wanted to include this slide because there were questions regarding the ratings and how, uh, what is, uh, the rating system that is used by the industry. And if you look at the top, uh, top row where it says Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, and I will, I will, uh, address the S&amp;P. Generally, it starts at triple A, which is, which is prime paper, and then double A plus, double A and double A minus, which is the high grade. And the upper medium-grade investment grade securities are A+, A, and A-,. Our policy does not allow anything below A ratings for municipalities, A+ for medium-term notes, meaning corporate bonds. So most of our investments are in the upper medium-grade, high-grade, and prime ratings. Next slide, please. There was also a question about the weighted average rating for our overall portfolio. The first line, as you see, City Glendale portfolio is double A plus for the S&amp;P ratings and the different, uh, asset categories and the ratings for each different asset categories. So our investments are very safe. Want the next slide, please? Investment maturities, our overall maturity, maturities has decreased due to change in the yield curve and due to market forces. Next slide, please. Monthly average yield of the city's investments, yellow line, meets and exceeds the annual total return on the three-month treasury bill, the red line, per the city's investment objective. As you can see, the yield curve has crumbled, where last year we were purchasing investments at over two percent. This year, rates are closer to point two percent. The Federal Reserve has stated that they do not intend to increase the rates in the next three years, so we expect the overall portfolio and your, and the portfolio yield to decline over the next three years as higher-yield investments mature and are replaced on lower yields that we have in the market today. We do need to keep in mind that our goal is preservation of principal and liquidity first. Next slide, please. Portfolio key statistics, since I was elected City Treasurer in 2013, the portfolio value was three hundred and seventy-two million, three hundred and seventy-three, today it's at seven seventy-five. And the interest rating, interest earnings as of June 2013 was two, two and a half million dollars, at today it's at seventeen million, and our rates of returns have increased and we're holding steady at this point. Next slide, please. Just, just to do a little benchmarking, compare and comparison to similar cities overall, we are going, as you can see, City of Glendale and City of Burbank were pretty much even in terms of our yields, and we're higher than most other comparable cities. Next slide, please. Changes to the investment policy. There are no changes, and I do not recommend any changes to the investment policy at this point, except for minor changes to the wording of the current policy. First, the state has changed the wording of Putin person to Putin investor in the appropriate form to the state definition. As, as you can see, it's on, uh, the investment policy, page two. The old policy says Putin person, the new policy will say Putin investor. Second, we removed the dollar amount stated in the fault, which is a late investment limit. Being on the local investment advisory board for the state, uh, for the State Treasurer, Fiona Ma, I know that she has stated that she will be raising the maximum investment from the current seventy-five million, it's not sixty-five million, which is stated in our policy, to one hundred million. I believe that it is prudent that to remove the dollar amount and just leave it under the new policy of, uh, of the City of Glendale maximum set by law. I recommend approval at this point, and that is my report. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Can you go to page eleven, please?
Page eleven, yes.
Okay.
The comparison for the city.
Yeah, is that the City of Ontario, which is the bottom of the left?
Those who know the city manager of the City of Ontario, I just wanted to put that in there this morning.
I just wondered. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Bye, too.
Is there any question from City Treasurer, Mr. Rafi Manukian? Any questions? Okay. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion for this item.
I'll, Mr. Mayor, I'll move this, and I'll thank, uh, Treasurer Manukian for his report and for his steadfast, um, hand on, on our portfolio, making sure that our returns are above everyone else. So thank you very much, and with that, I'll move. If I can, Mr. City Attorney, stop me if I, I can't. 8B1 and 8C1.
You can make that motion as long as no other council members have any questions on the items.
Okay. 8B.
Good job, Rafi.
All right.
Good job, Mr. Manukian.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Manukian, and I'm glad you compared the cities, especially the last one, and the least was Ontario. Okay, anyway, thank you very much. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman? Yes. Devine?
Yes.
Kusaki?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, what's next, please?
Next would be item D, Public Works Regarding Resolution of Appropriation for Glendale Tree Stories Program. One, resolution appropriating twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, will go directly to Mr. Emrani, Public Works Director.
Mr. Emrani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Staff is recommending, uh, the City Council approve a resolution of appropriation, appropriating near twenty thousand dollars, uh, for this California Humanities Grant for Glendale Tree Stories. It's a very unique grant that our staff, uh, identified this year and applied for, and we were fortunate in receiving it. Basically, uh, this grant involves collecting stories and, uh, working with the community to capture their favorite, uh, memory or stories regarding the trees that we have here in Glendale, and we're going to be working with the Glendale Youth Alliance on this program. And I, I think it's a very good program to promote the, um, investing in our green canopy as it reduces greenhouse gases, and, um, we're very happy to, uh, have this grant.
Thank you. Is there, okay, Ms. Devine?
Yes, thank you. I just want to, uh, congratulations on the grant, and I think it sounds like fun, but I just asked that you be sure that Glendale Beautiful, uh, is a part of this, uh, this project, because I know that, you know, their Arbor Day celebration and, uh, you know, they're always promoting trees in Glendale, and they should definitely be a, an important part of this, uh, project. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll be working with Glendale Beautiful and others in our community to, uh, to help promote the, uh, this, uh, the idea of, again, planting trees and recording these wonderful stories.
And I'll move the item.
Uh, can I?
Yes, Mr. Brot.
Let me first, yeah, so, yeah, I like this. Thanks for, for getting this, uh, for working on it, and, um, I'm hoping that somehow we can connect this up with, um, with any stepped-up urban forestry plan that we put together per the request I made at the last council meeting for a climate adaptation strategy. I think, um, it'd be good to connect the two in some way. And, and also, I noticed, um, you talk about public programming being a joint effort of community service and parks. Uh, the Public Works Forestry website, is that the Indigenous Tree website? Is it the same thing, or is it something different?
Yes, it's the same thing.
Okay. So we've got community services and parks, um, public works, and, uh, I guess Glendale Beautiful through the Arbor Day 2022. I would suggest you also rope in, uh, Glendale Library Arts and Culture, because they could definitely, you know, amplify these stories and, and, um, and maybe piggyback with some of their own activities. So that would be my only suggestion, would be to, to please, you know, bring them in also as part of the, uh, the joint efforts around this. Otherwise, it, you know, congratulations, it's, it's a great, um, I think it's going to be a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do I have, I have the motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Emrani, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusaki?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, now, uh, the next item, 8E, I have postponed this to next week, uh, about, this is a consideration of ordinance to ban the sale of Miler blooms in the City of Glendale. I have received basically almost two hundred emails and lots of calls and texts, and they were asking that there is a, uh, study is going on, and they cannot come forward, and those who are in, uh, I mean, they, they are against any ordinance to ban the sale of Miler, Miler, Miler blooms. Uh, they want to come forward and bring their, uh, the study to us before we will decide on this item. So I respected their request and postponed this to next week. So with that, next item, please.
Mayor, next item would be 8F, Community Development Regarding Release for Request or Proposal for Shared Mobility Pilot Program. One, resolution authorizing staff to issue a request for proposal for shared mobility pilot program.
Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, will go directly to Mr. Calvert, and he has a short, uh, PowerPoint presentation for you. Mr. Calvert?
Mr. Calvert.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Uh, we were last before you on September 1st with an, an original proposal to consider a mobility share program with a single vendor who had approached us, uh, to consider two hundred and fifty bicycles and electric bicycles. Uh, per council direction, we were asked to go back and consider scooters again. Uh, we were asked to issue an RFP to make this a competitive process, and we were also instructed to, uh, reach out to Metro again and discuss with them, uh, the Metro Bike Share Program that they had and to see how that would fit, um, with any program that we may want to pilot here in the city. Um, so tonight, we want to give an overview of the draft RFP that we have put together. Uh, we are asking for authorization to release this RFP in the coming weeks. Uh, we'll give a little bit of an overview of what that pilot program and those regulations could look like, um, and then a quick discussion on where we are with Metro in terms of their bike share program.
Full time.
So this graphic timeline just kind of represents, uh, the, the thought process behind how we would establish this program. Um, we are essentially back here where this, this gray bar is, introduce ordinance, RFP selection period. Uh, the order's a little, little out of whack there, but, um, this is really what we are, we would consider to be our ramping up period. As we put together this RFP, we release this and see which vendors are most appropriate. As we had mentioned before, there are also a couple of ordinances that we would need to change to make sure that we could authorize the use of these devices in the City of Glendale. Uh, upon program launch, we would anticipate this being a one-year pilot program. Uh, we would return to council at the ninety-day mark to provide a report out so that council would have an understanding of how the program was performing. Uh, this would also include a public survey and then a summary report at the end of the pilot program. Uh, this references the, the pilot program service area that was originally discussed. Uh, this is something we would like to get feedback from council on this evening. Uh, there were some, uh, suggestions and, and questions regarding whether or not we could extend this up to Glendale Community College. This is a service area that we were starting with, though, essentially downtown, South Glendale, um, Chevy Chase being the boundary to the east, San Fernando to the west, Los Angeles to the south, and then, uh, kind of jogging 134 and Glen Oaks to the north. Uh, this would also carve out kind of a hole in the donut, um, to exempt, uh, the Americana as they have expressed interest in not having these devices in their area.
Uh, may I ask a question on that?
Yes, please, Mr. Brotman.
If you could go back to that image. So are we, I understand exempting the Americana, but are we also cutting out Central Park?
We are not. Uh, we could if that is something the council wanted to direct, though.
Uh, no, I know, I, I thought, I was afraid we were doing that, and I, and I didn't understand why. So all we're doing is we're cutting out the Americana, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So at the September 1st meeting, council had, uh, recommended to release an RFP looking at at least, uh, two vendors, uh, to provide approximately five hundred total devices. Uh, this would be bicycles and scooters, and when I say bicycles, that also includes electric bicycles. As part of this, we have recommended, uh, that at least two hundred and fifty of the devices be bicycles, and this kind of harkens back to our May 2019 session where we did not want to become completely inundated with scooters and that we wanted to have a balanced system. Um, part of the reason for coming back, uh, during the pilot program after the ninety-day mark is to evaluate whether or not this device quantity is either too much or too little. So we would return to council with ridership data, uh, information on how they're being used, the performance of the program, and if there is a need to either increase the total number of devices or decrease in order to, to meet the needs of the City of Glendale. Just some kind of quick overviews of the RFP and some of the regulations that are, are incorporated into that and what we're asking from our, uh, potential vendors. Uh, we would be looking for up to two vendors to provide these devices. That could be, uh, somebody who could provide bicycles and scooters, it could be someone that just provides bicycles, someone that could just provide scooters. Um, uh, we essentially could mix and match the combination depending on how these firms, uh, respond to the RFP and how much they meet the requirements that we're setting forth. This would be a twelve-month pilot program. Uh, from there, we would evaluate whether or not to turn this into a permanent program for the City of Glendale. We recommend operating hours from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Again, this is from an equity perspective, recognizing those that may be working in the service economy, need these devices later in the evening, um, and making sure that they are available. Uh, we would have an option there to terminate this pilot program early if we found that it was not satisfactory, or if any of the vendors were not meeting the expectations that we were hoping, um, and, and that could, uh, lead to a, or could stem from a number of things, as, as we'll discuss. Um, we are asking for a public engagement and safety education campaign. We don't want to just launch right into two vendors and just throw these devices out there. We would like to have a buffer, uh, period in there to get people, uh, comfortable, get the citizens familiar with this program and know what to expect as it rolls out. We will be asking for data collection as well. We want to understand, uh, one, where we would have these, these devices parked, uh, to be most useful. We want to understand where people are going. This could inform things like the bicycle transportation plan, uh, where we need to invest next in terms of infrastructure, bicycle lanes, things of that nature. And we're also, also asking for insurance indemnity. Uh, with this, we have not set a prescribed amount at, at this time. We're still working through that on the RFP, but one of the considerations here is that last time in May of 2019, when we made this proposal, uh, we heard from a number of vendors that our insurance requirements may have been a little bit too much, so we are going to ask for them to propose to, to us what they think they should be and then work from there. Some of the rules for these, uh, you must be eighteen years old to use the devices. It's pretty much standard practice across. It's pretty much standard practice across all of the companies. No riding on sidewalks right now. We know that council had brought this up as a point of discussion to allow riding on sidewalks. That would require us to change an ordinance, which we could capture with some of the other ordinance changes we would need to make, but that would not count for scooters. Currently, state law does prohibit scooters from being on sidewalks. That does not apply to bicycles, though, or e-bicycles. Scooters can use routes that are actually below 25 miles an hour. My apologies, that's a mistake in the slides versus 35. Or any street with a bicycle lane. Helmets are currently not required as state law had changed, though if you are under the age of 18, which would not apply here since they cannot use the devices, they would have to wear helmets.
Can I ask a question on that last one?
Yes, Mr. Rani.
Thanks. Are we, I know last year, I guess it was, when you first presented, you talked a lot about geofencing. Are we going to be using geofencing to control where scooters can go and keep them off of these roads that are, you know, we don't want them on Glen Oaks, obviously, right? Or wherever we don't have a bike path or the speeds are too high? Is that what we're going to do?
Yes, actually, I'll show an example of that in just a couple of slides.
Okay.
We would have parking requirements as well. We understand that sometimes in some cities, these have been challenges where people have parked on ADA curbs at intersections, at crosswalks, potentially blocking the way of those that may be mobility challenged, potentially blocking sidewalks. So with that, we would propose that any parking hubs, whether they be fixed or if they be painted or marked on the pavement or even virtual hubs, would be at least 15 feet from any intersection to make sure that there was enough clearance and so the devices don't find themselves blocking the path of any curb cuts, any crosswalks, or anything of that nature. We would also ask that any of these devices be kept in terms of parking locations, at least 48 inches away from parking meters, transit infrastructure, benches, things of that. Again, trying not to clutter the street too much, trying to make sure that we keep these devices corralled in locations to prevent that kind of messy clutter that some cities have experienced. We would ask for any proposers to give us an incentive and/or penalty program to encourage good behavior. That penalty program, as we have learned from different companies, can come in a way of eventually banning users after so many infractions. Some give away incentives, including free rides or discounted memberships as good ridership and good behavior is exhibited. And then we would also be asking for consideration for parking hubs. We do know that in the early going of many of these, they're going to consider virtual hubs at first to better understand where people may be riding, where people may be leaving the devices, where are the most convenient locations. And from there, that would be part of that 90-day assessment period where we would ask to then establish what those defined physical parking spaces would be. That can be done in a number of ways. You can see in this example here, they've actually painted the concrete. We could do vinyl strips to designate parking areas. We could use parking spaces on the street potentially as well. So that's something that we would go back and evaluate based on that data that we collect in the first 90 days. As Councilmember Brotman had mentioned, we would require geofencing. This is to make sure that, one, the devices are not used outside of the defined service area that we've set, but also to make sure that they don't end up in places like the Americana or in other locations where we don't want to see them. This is an example from Atlanta, using two different vendors and how they were able, the red kind of outlined areas are the areas where they do not allow them. So they didn't want them in their primary park. They didn't want them near the Capitol Building. In one case, they didn't want them near a university campus. So we can set that and we can work with the vendors based on the direction we get from council this evening regarding that service area. And we can provide that map for them to use as kind of a template to define the geofenced area. Now, the way that would work is if that device was taken outside of the geofenced area, it's not going to just stop. That would be a hazard to the rider that may be on it. They essentially would get tossed right off of it. But what would happen is that once they park that device, if it was outside of the service area, it would not be able to be checked out again. Typically, what we have learned from talking with the vendors is that they are then notified that this device is outside of the service area and that they need to come and get it. And then they bring it back into the service area.
And excuse me, Mr. Calvert?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
So they will, the provider will know who the scooter or the bicycle was rented to and they will not be able to rent again? Is that what you're saying?
It depends on what their incentive or penalty system is. From what we've seen with most, they typically give them five, 10 opportunities for infractions. That's something we could work with them to set that. But after they haven't parked it appropriately or used it outside of the service area after a certain number of times, they would essentially ban their account and no longer allow them to use it.
Bradley, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Rani.
Do any of these scooter vendors have technology that would, you know, not immediately stop the device when it goes out of the geofenced area, but kind of like slow it down to a gradual stop? Because if we don't want somebody going down, you know, a road like Glen Oaks, they would still be able to do this under the way you're describing it now.
We do know that some offer that. And again, that's part of the RFP is we're asking, what is that technology? What is that ability for them to stop slow, prohibit the use outside of the service area? So once we receive those responses, the RFP back, we'd be able to see which one best can achieve that objective of making sure that people are not using them outside of the service area. Not every company was exactly the same in how they approached it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And another thing that I did not include in the slides, but it's something that we've asked for as well, is that when devices are left outside of the service area, say someone parks this in one of the neighborhoods to the north and leaves it on the street, that's clearly outside of the boundaries. While they are notified, obviously, we would like to also have a means for someone who is a non-user to be able to report that device. So if it's improperly parked, if it's outside of the service area that we've defined, we want to make sure that there is an opportunity for non-users to be able to report this. We would like to know what that cleanup time would be. How quickly do they respond? Is it two hours? Is it 24 hours? We would also be asking for information on how they plan to recalibrate and redistribute devices at the end of the day. We want to make sure that at the start of each day that they're evenly distributed across the city for equity purposes, but also just to make sure that they don't all end up in one single location. As I mentioned in the-
Quick question.
Mr. Rani.
One thing, somebody wrote to me about this suggestion. If we could somehow have my Glendale app be a way that a resident could notify the city that there's an improperly parked device and then, you know, and then it would somehow flow directly through to the vendor, they'd be required within, like you said, two hours to pick it up. And if they don't, we penalize them. That kind of a system, I think, might be useful in helping to avoid the problems that a lot of the beach cities had with these devices just scattered all over the place.
And that's something we can ask them if they can integrate with any of our technology, any of our services for reporting and things of that nature. That's something we'll be sure to include as part of the RFP. As I had mentioned, after 90 days, we would like to return to council and give an update, inform council of what the ridership looked like, what the trends were, safety and incident reporting, were we having challenges keeping these devices corralled? Are they being used appropriately? Do we need to scale this device quantity up? Do we need to scale it down to match that ridership level? And then also present a draft of a public survey to council. And this public survey would be something that we would release approximately six to nine months into the pilot program so that we could put together a report at the end of the pilot program to determine whether or not council would wish to turn this into a permanent program for the city of Glendale. And that survey is really going to look at the perception by the community and not just users, but non-users as well. It'll be important to gather their feedback and input to see their perspective if users were using these devices appropriately. We would also like to understand the impacts to businesses. Was it positive or negative? Looking holistically at how these devices are being used. What were they being used for? Was it commuting? Was it recreation? Was it to go to school? Was it to go to entertainment? Again, to help us try to calibrate the system, especially if we do move to a permanent program, and understand best where to locate these devices. And then also identify improvements, both for users and non-users. How are these being parked? Are there areas that we need to omit from the service area? Do we need to expand further? Also looking at the infrastructure and comparing that to incident data and things of that nature to understand where we need to be making improvements, where some of, where we may be seeing a higher number of riders and that demand for improved infrastructure may be there. And that would all be included as part of the program summary report that we would deliver to council at the end of the 12-month period and then ask whether or not council wished to turn this into a permanent program. Lastly, I'll mention that we've had discussions per council's direction with the Metro Bike Share. We had heard from some members of the community and council as well to consider this program from an integration perspective with our surrounding cities. We would like to have some continuity, the ability to be able to ride a bicycle down to Atwater Village and then back up using the same system that's shared between cities. We've reached out to them and what they have currently informed us, the way the program would work is we do have a grant that would cover our initial capital cost investment. And this was estimated at a 12-station system with 300 bicycles. Typically, it's a 50-50 split. We do have a grant to help cover our portion, but operations and maintenance for the Metro Bike Share is split 65-35. And that would put a pretty substantial financial responsibility on the city of Glendale for these 300 devices. And that's estimated somewhere between $160,000 and $180,000 per month to maintain these devices, to repair the devices if something happens. Now, what they have informed us is that they are actually considering and pursuing a cost-neutral program, which they plan to take to their board later this year. This would cover most, if not all, of the O and M costs, which would bring down that $160,000, $180,000 bill that we may see, may have seen if we were to go into this program right now. As mentioned, they plan on taking this to their board at the end of the year, and they've advised us to wait until spring of 2021 and check back in with them, what they're calling this cost-neutral program. They have agreed to put us on a priority list of a city who is interested to have this cost-neutral program, but they have advised that we wait until spring of 2021 to pursue establishing a Metro Bike Share program, really to help us eliminate some of those costs. If you haven't seen the news story lately, there was one in, I believe it was in Riverside. They eventually terminated their program because of that cost. They were in a very similar structure, not with Metro Bike, it was with a private vendor at the time, but they had a very similar situation and they could no longer justify keeping that expense for the city. So we are taking Metro's advice. We're going to check back in with them later on this year, early next year, to find out if that cost-neutral program goes through and then see how that could fit into a shared mobility program for the city. So next steps, if council does provide authorization to release this RFP, we would release this within the next few weeks. We're still tightening a few details. We need to send this over to our friends in the city attorney's office and get their input as well. We would return to council following that selection process with the recommended and preferred vendors. And then we would also need to return to council during that period to amend the ordinances that have been discussed before. And then we'll continue, as mentioned, to monitor the progress of Metro's cost-neutral program. So tonight, there are three alternatives for council. Direct staff to issue this RFP, decline to authorize the issue and see the RFP, or if there's any other alternative council would wish to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Is there any question or from Mr. Calvert? Any question?
I have a question. Am I on mute?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Thank you. Mr. Calvert, did you say that scooters must be on the street, not on the sidewalk?
That is correct. There is a state law in place right now that does not allow them to be ridden on the sidewalk.
Okay. Second, in your presentation, you were talking about the RFP and the bicycles. And you mentioned one of the subsections was standard or e-bicycles. Are you going to be specific in the RFP that we don't want standard bikes? We want e-bicycles?
We were going to, we intended on leaving it open. The vendor that we had brought to you in September 1st of this year was going to provide both of those. If there's direction from council to rather only see electric bicycles, that is something we could change, but we were having it open to provide both.
Okay, okay. I just want to make a comment and then a suggestion. You know, I'm acutely aware that this shared mobility and micro-mobility is the trend that we have to explore moving forward. But, and I'm in favor of the pilot program, okay? However, I want it on record that I am against scooters. And so what I would like to request is that when the RFP goes out, you request the vendors come back with their RFP for scooters separately from bicycles. And it can be the same company that does both, or it can be two different companies. But when it's presented to council, I would appreciate it. And I don't know if I need a second on this or if I'm just, you will take my suggestion and bring them back as two items, one for scooters, one for e-bikes. I have safety concerns and I have aesthetic concerns about control of scooters, so I'm not really in favor of those. So I'm requesting that these come back as two separate items.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, somebody would need to make that as part of the motion when the time comes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll do that.
Thank you. Is there any other comment, Mr. Najarian?
I have a question. Bradley, thanks for getting in touch with Metro. If we want to, if we want to take advantage of their program, their new program, this cost-neutral, which means it won't cost the city anything, right? Am I understanding that?
From a monthly operations and maintenance perspective, correct.
So if we want to, if we'd like to take advantage of that program or at least see what they have to offer, what would our course of action be today? Can we still go out with an RFP or would that freeze out Metro's program from our consideration?
No, we actually were not going to essentially include Metro as part of the RFP. That was going to be a parallel pursuit. Regardless of the RFP, we were still going to look at doing that from council direction to public. It seemed there was a lot of interest to make sure we were integrated with other cities.
Okay. And what scooter companies are still out there?
I have to remember that off the top of my head.
Bird, Lime?
Bird, Lyft, I believe, is still there. Lime is no longer doing operations in the state of California. There is Razor, and I believe there are one or two other ones as well, smaller ones.
So what Ms. Devine is proposing later to be put in the motion would be to get a traditional bike, a scooter, an e-bike as components, as separate applications for the RFP. Is that, is that what you understood her motion to be?
I think the approach that we would likely need to take to avoid doing multiple RFPs is that we would ask for proposals. Knowing that there are companies that only do scooters, we know they're only going to propose scooters. There's probably going to be a handful out there that do bicycles and scooters. And essentially, we would just put a line in that RFP that states if you are proposing to mix the devices, that you submit a separate plan just for that and then a plan just for their individual devices.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other comments or questions?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kusakian.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for bringing this report very quickly. I think the turnaround time on it was great, following our afternoon meeting regarding this topic that, I'm not sure how many people watching this evening had a chance to watch that. I made a lot of my comments there and I'm in support of this. I've used shared bike programs in various cities that I've visited with my family. And I've always enjoyed them. And I think that Glendale's downtown area is perfect, ideal for it. Maybe not ideal, I mean, we definitely can do some things to ensure bicyclist safety, certainly, but I think it's a good start. And I definitely support this RFP. Just for clarification, so I just want to make sure, and I know the answer to this, but only motorized scooters are banned from being on sidewalks, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, before we get about 300 emails from angry six-year-olds like my son.
Very good point.
All right. So with that, and I support the considerations and changes that Councilmember Devine wants to make in this. I know that one of the early companies that we were looking at was primarily a bicycle company, but expressed the capability to do scooters. Hopefully, with this RFP, we get to see who's out there, who's left. We get to sift and see who falls into our laps in terms of potential vendors. And I'm excited to support this. I'll wait for all my colleagues to make their comments. And then if someone wants to make a motion, I'd be happy to second it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, just want to thank Bradley for pulling this together so quickly. And I'm in support. I'm okay with, you know, doing the RFP in such a way that we can, you know, separately identify scooters and bikes and e-bikes. That's, I don't think, a problem. I'm not concerned about safety issues on scooters, I think, or the other issues that have, you know, plagued some of the- or the other issues that have, you know, plagued some of the, uh, the beach cities like, like Venice and Santa Monica, they did have a lot of headaches, they were early adopters, I think they've learned, and I think we can learn from what happened there. The majority of the complaints there were scooters that were just left lying around and, and kind of just, um, uh, you know, kind of blighting, uh, the downtowns. And with, with, you know, rules that we can put in now about, you know, penalties and incentives and geofencing and things like that, I think we can, I think we can manage that. So, um, I'm in favor and, uh, uh, unless anybody else wants to, I'll move the item.
Okay, one second. Mr. Calvert, uh, you know, what I'm worried is those who are using bicycles and motorcycles on a regular basis, they will know the rules and regulation of, let's say, city of Glendale. But somebody comes forward and wants to rent one of those, whether it's bicycle or motorcycle, whatever, scooter, um, I mean, just for fun of it, there's lots of rules and regulation, how they would know, but those old rules that what, what's the Glendale rule? How they will know what to do?
Uh, there are a couple ways in which we could tackle that. Um, first, we would have a safety and education campaign to kick the program off, so prior to launching, we would make sure that we were out there, um, dispensing that information to the general public so they knew how. Now, to the point of somebody who may be coming into town, not familiar with their rules, um, a, a number of these will actually, when you go to rent the device, you scan a QR code and, and it pops up the rules and regulations of the local jurisdiction that you're in--
That would be pages and pages, the, you just want to rent it for fun, to go around Glendale, and you will stand and read all those rules and regulation, what to do, where to go, where not to go, or what, you know, where to park, let's say.
So, so what I've seen is that most actually do it in a pretty concise way. Um, you know, you may have to scroll through a couple pages, but they use an icon-based system with a couple bullet points to explain the key rules and regulations, such as parking, where to ride, where not to ride, some of those kind of key rules and regulations. Another thing that we could also consider is, uh, the city of Portland did it where they actually had tagged the devices where they essentially had a small card that was affixed that had all the rules, uh, required for riding. So that is something that we can put into the RFP, what is their strategy beyond just the initial public engagement to make sure that riders are aware of the, the rules of the road, essentially.
Okay, but, uh, I don't know. So you guys know better, so, uh, with that, uh, do I have a second?
I don't think--
Oh, I guess somebody was trying to-- Okay.
It was moved by Brodmann.
Before you go--
Parting three-seconded it.
What's that?
I'm fine.
I'll second it. Second, three-seconded the motion.
It's fine. Third.
All right.
I just, um, before we vote on it, I just want to check about calls, because I don't want us to vote and then we find out we have callers.
I don't think we have any calls, otherwise--
Mayor, we do not have callers for this one on oral communications--
Because usually, Mr. Ajamian, when we have calls, uh, I see that he's--
After the treasurer's report. So I'm just kidding, Mr. Renovia.
All right.
I would like to move the item with, um, with the, the changes, um, requested by council member Divine, I don't know if those need to be spelled out, or if those are already clear.
If I could, so what I heard, what we heard was a, a change to the motion that would allow, would, uh, ask for proposals if they were going to submit on scooters or scooters and bikes to submit those proposals separately.
Correct.
Correct, a separate plan for each one, if they were used a mixed devices or just one device.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, Osacks, please.
Next item is oral communication, discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda, council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have three callers on the line.
Wow, so let's go to the callers then.
Victoria, you're live, Victoria?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Uh, good evening, dear Fatula Mayor. Uh, I'm somewhat involved, uh, with the Myla balloons, well, because two of them came flying down to my feet. First, thanks to Charlie, I read about Mr. Zern's concern for light in Glendale, we do not want to be in darkness. Then there was this daddy in the newspaper that cried for 50 cent Myla balloon, he wants to celebrate. First of all, Myla balloon is not the celebration, the child is. You can have live music, make a card, other things you can do. Second, eh, the daddy can call council member Ardis Kusakian to help him get over it. Would he be crying when his precious boy would climb the tree or down the steep slope to, for Myla balloon fall and break his neck? This will be about the sale and the use, right? Why the electric lines are so high? For safety, prevent injury, or what about the solar lines? I think it, the reason is not to be touched. All one has to do, release the Myla balloon at Grayson Plant, and then entire city will go dark. Then, it's a lot of energy and a dangerous surge to households, to their appliances, TVs and all, all of that, to restart the power. The police will collect the explosives, the illegal drugs, paraphernalia, pyro, eh, eh, everything that's happening right now, illegal fireworks, illegal Myla balloons and illegal mufflers. The Myla balloon category is a grenade, dynamite. Who is seeking a useless title or ordinance which acts only as a guide? We need a law. I vote yes. Ban of sale and use. My request, my request is, as soon as it's done, Mr. Brodmann and Mr. Zern, or Mr. Brodmann and Mary, go to Sacramento and get that ban of sale and use into law. It will be a win-win for the entire state of California. I've noticed on brand that the car dealers already, uh, have changed their, their, their behavior with the balloons. They don't have, uh, free balloons flying around, not even Myla, the balloon that's not hurting anybody. So, um, Mr. Zern, eh, thank you to Mr. Zern, you laid it out, now it's out of your hands. If unsuccessful, the city has the duty to then enforce the law that's already on the books as it is. Well, today, Mr. Phil, Dr. Phil said on TV, talk is cheap, so hasta la vista, thank you.
Thank you very much, next caller, please.
Leah Aparamian, Leah, you're live?
Hi, yes, I just had a quick question. I would like to know when the city of Glendale will allow cannabis dispensaries to operate. Um, we have a lot of patients in the city of Glendale, and I feel like a lot of the patients can benefit from services in Glendale, and I've been going to surrounding cities to get access to any sort of cannabis products, and it's causing kind of inconveniences. I just wanted to know if that's going to be on the agenda or not anytime soon.
Uh, usually, we don't answer the calls, but do we have anything on the agenda? Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, there is nothing that has been scheduled, uh, to come back to the city council. If there was such a request from, uh, a council member, we would bring information back to the city council.
Okay, thank you for the call. Is there any more comments?
There's one more caller.
One more.
Seda, you're live, Seda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members and staff. Uh, my name is Seda Barzegar, I was calling to bring up an item, uh, that is off the agenda, the beekeeping ordinance, and I wonder if there are any updates on this.
Well, okay, uh, we usually, at this time, we don't answer the questions, but, okay, let's go to our city manager, Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at this time, the item has been tentatively scheduled for November 3rd.
Okay, thank you, is there any other call?
Mayor, there are no other callers.
Okay, thank you. So we have done that new business, which I have. Okay, statement from Mayor Rojagajanian, me, on appointment of interim city manager. At this time, I'm going to make a motion for the appointments, appointment of an interim city manager to succeed Ms. Beers while the council considers its option on a permanent appointment of city manager. The city council has made no decision on a permanent appointment, nor has the council made any decision on the next steps regarding the appointment of a permanent city manager. The council continues to consider its options and will make further announcement in the, in that regard in the near future. So therefore, I read the motion that, uh, I move that pursuant to article, article nine, I guess, section one of the Glendale City Charter, Rubik Golanyan is hereby appointed as the interim city manager of the city of Glendale, effective October 17, 2020. So now we ask for--
Let's send the council--
Second.
Oh. Okay, is there a comment, or otherwise, uh, let's move the item?
You had a second, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I have second? I mean, while I was talking, maybe they said I didn't-- Okay, let's go. Roll call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
I respectfully abstain, thank you.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, and congratulations to Mr. Golanyan. Okay, uh, now--
Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to add item of, of new business, which I would read the motion and then just ask somebody to actually make it. Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I asked that somebody make a motion that the city attorney being hereby is authorized to enter into and execute a conflict of interest waiver with the law firm of Holland and Hart LLP in connection with the firm's representation of the city of Glendale for a proposed virtual power plant for the city of Glendale and the firm's representation of the inner mountain power authority in unrelated matters.
Okay, is there-- Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So with that said, meeting is adjourned at 8:44 PM, thank you.